Continuing within family engagement and community engagement. We also have had, and I know you know all about this already, but we had a wonderful experience last year in the gardening projects that our students and staff were involved in. We have a memorial garden established. We had vegetable gardens established here, right at the senior centers. Two of the six raised beds were Brezner Hand School vegetable gardens with John Gay and Jimmy in second grade students. Stacy Boucher and her first grade students created the memorial garden and then we also had the pumpkin patch, which all of grade two participated in through STEM. That relationship continues and continues to grow with bigger and better. It's amazing to me, the Friends of Newburyport Trees, the Horticultural Society, Amanda Moore and her connection, our friends here at the senior center. There has been so much support. And Sue Brown, who volunteers at all of the schools and probably even beyond the schools in terms of gardening projects that need to get done. But you know, with the adult support from these organizations as well as through just good-hearted people who want to be a part of all of this, our kids have had such amazing experiences. And we just found out today or yesterday that Coles Brothers is going to donate bulbs to all of the schools and asking if we might have interest and so forth and so on. So it really continues to be a really nice thing. And we were actually invited to a reception on Thursday, right here at the senior center, with all of our friends from those local organizations that are supporting the gardens. So anyway.
We have about a week and a half to get the bulbs in before it's probably a hard frost.
Yes, we have to move. I sent out a quick email today to the teachers. Okay, continuing on.
Sure. So the next area, program category in our school improvement plan is professional culture. One of the things that we try to instill in the students is civic engagement and responsibility and volunteerism. And we do so many different fundraisers or different volunteering efforts. And so we were trying to, this isn't even all of them, we were trying to brainstorm a little bit earlier today. Just last year alone, we contributed to the Jimmy Fund, to Children's Hospital. This October, we had Pink Month for Dana Farber and we had donations for that. We did donations as the children brought in for the hurricane, the two separate hurricanes. This year, we always do the supporting of the troops at Veterans Day and collections at Memorial Day. Mr. and Jimmy's class also contributes to our neighbor's table and they pick like one food item each month to send in. So there's so many. I mean, these are only just a few of the different things that we are doing with the children.
As well as with adults. Some are for just the students, while others are just for the adults or both.
Very good point. We also had a field day. One of the things that we've been trying to do is partner more with the senior center and try to establish some intergenerational activities. So Kathy Hill and Jessie Craddock last year did a student-senior field day right out front here in front of the senior center on the grassy fields out there. And so some of the seniors came and helped out with the field day and participated in activities. So that was a great event. And then the other thing was we really wanted to make sure that the Clipper values were understood by the kids. So you know, sometimes explaining perseverance to a preschooler is, you know, how do we do that? How do we explain that? And we had community meetings throughout the year last year when we all come together as an all-school and we'll do different things that will show the students, for example, perseverance. We had the third graders who participated in the top basketball program come and they did their routine, which the children loved. But then the teachers talked about how, you know, they had to come in early at seven o'clock in the morning, you know, during the cold and that that's perseverance. And so we tried to bring those community meetings to a level that they understand those values that they see at the school. So last year, we rolled each of them out that way and we still revisit that. So we just had our very fun assembly, which is just the Clipper Pride Day, you know, the day before Thanksgiving. We try to get them prepared for a little experience for Color Day at the high school. And each of the grades just did a simple little cheer, but the cheer was one of the Clipper values, right? So we try to make those connections as much as we can. So looking ahead to next year, we're really looking forward to the work for professional culture that will come out of this year's PLC groups that are just getting underway. And we're really looking forward to all of the Alice work that we're doing and becoming Alice-trained and Alice-certified district. So those are two big things that we foresee happening throughout the remainder of our school improvement plan and also gathering the information about all the work that the teachers are doing with their training of the STEM scopes and seeing if that will be as well-received at the lower grades as it was by third grade. So I'd say those are like the big chunks that we're working on.
And for the Alice training, all of the teachers and staff have participated in that particular online training that was required. So we will be providing an evening for parents in January and then we will be moving forward with introducing Alice to our students later on in the school year. So I think we're feeling good about moving forward as a district. I know we are at Brezner Hand and I think it's, you know, it solidifies our thinking and our planning for that level of preparedness. I think we're ready to move on to the teaching of all students as our next program category. And this is always going to be a work in progress because providing professional development, participating in professional development, refining our practices, reviewing curriculum, it's always an ongoing practice. And so right now, science is at the forefront of our thinking with the STEM scopes, PD and the pilot and so forth. And not only is third grade invested, but fourth and fifth grade are as well. So there's a bridge between our Brezner Hand School and the Mullen School and we've got that grade span covered thus far. So that's really good work because we can also do professional development with the teachers in the other grades, which leads to a natural connection and conversation in terms of the vertical piece. In addition to that, a co-teaching course was offered to teachers here in Newburyport over the summer and we had a number of teachers participate. You may be familiar with Judy DeLucia. She's a consultant. She worked with us a few years back on the teacher evaluation system. And so she offered this course and Amy and I and Karina and Angela, I think, may have been there. We visited during the last day of the course and the teachers were all presenting so many projects. And it's kind of nice to see that they've taken that work and they're applying it to the work that they do at school with their colleagues. And Amy and I and Karina are actually working with Judy as well. And so we have some consulting time with her too, which has been, which has been actually quite wonderful. And we're excited about where we may end up as a result. We also have an assistive technology consultant that has been with our district for a few years now. And she has identified, or she has actually become familiar with our staff and is there on an as-needed basis. And we don't have to reach out to her as administrators. The teachers know who she is, what she offers, and on an as-needed basis, we're able to have her come and consult with our teachers regarding assistive technology, the integration of it, as well as guided support well beyond the assistive technology piece. And she's done a really nice job with that.
That's true.
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask me what her name was and I can see her. Amy, help me out. You can't. Isn't that awful?
I'm sitting here thinking the exact same thing. I can't either.
I can't either.
First thing, Karen.
No.
I'm so sorry.
You don't have to. I was just wondering something I know, that's all.
From the middle school.
It'll probably come to me before we're sitting here.
Or at midnight. Okay, moving along.
Can we ask questions?
Yes.
Just in terms of that piece, because I know that with the new technology, when the school opened two years ago, two and a half years ago.
Oh, no longer. This is our fourth year.
No, it's not.
It is. 2014.
Three and a half years.
Three and a half, yes.
Your fourth year.
Well, it's our fourth year, yes.
There was a real learning curve in terms of the new technology. And I just would like you to talk about where you think the teachers are from, where they were when that first year to where they are now in year four.
I don't think that we're at the learning curve anymore at all.
It's amazing.
So all the teachers in every classroom, as you know, has, well, they have their Surface Pros like Angela's. And they can connect that to the whiteboards, the interactive whiteboards in their classroom. If anything, I'm the one, when I come in to do the staff meeting, like needs to get help to like project it sometimes. But I see the interactive whiteboards used all the time for a variety of different activities, like the preschool students will use it for some movement breaks, you know, make some dancers up there, all the way to teachers using like hooks and motivators to actually lessons.
Yoga.
Yoga, yep. So the interactive whiteboards are used all the time daily. I just actually met with a new teacher today who came from another district and I said, hey, you know, have you used your Elmo? I thought that, you know, this particular, when you were showing the children this worksheet, this would have been a good way to project it. She's like, you know, I do use it and I should have used it. And so I was sort of happy to hear that too, because maybe she didn't have as much technology from the other district that she came with, but she was certainly familiar with what we have. And I think that most of the technology comes to the children now, you know, with the Chromebooks and the iPads are in the classroom. But Catherine Page, who's our library and media specialist, has been wonderful in terms of integrating with the teachers, particularly she has a nice partnership with our STEM teacher, Kristin Spinney. So like they'll partner with Hour of Code, but then she also offers different trainings for the teachers on new software or ideas that she has. But I'm not seeing as much, you know, I don't know, as much needed help. I mean, I think some people are always more a little technologically savvy than others, but I do think that, you know, even those that, you know, might not be as technologically savvy know how easy it is to reach out in email help desk or speak to their colleague or, you know, elicit help from Catherine. So I think that it's amazing how quickly we went from like the 1950s to 2017. We just want to keep that momentum going as, you know, the technology, you know, will start to wear out now that we're in our fourth year. We want to make sure that we have plans for replacement and replenishment and all of that is something that we're talking about now through the budget process.
Karen Heffler is your assistive tech consultant. It used to be Cheryl King. Karen is the new consultant, so.
It was Cheryl that I couldn't remember.
It was Cheryl King.
Yeah, it was. Karen Heffler is the new person.
Thank you.
Different Karen, but it is a Karen.
But it is Karen. I said, no, it's not.
But it wasn't, because it was Cheryl for so long.
Cheryl has been with us.
Really happy to hear that.
And, you know, even within in the classroom setting and with the children working on devices as well individually or in small groups, you very often will walk into a classroom and it's not only a teacher-directed opportunity for the use of the technology, but also children are utilizing it as well. And, you know, we chuckle, but some of our students are really, really savvy, second and third grade. It's amazing. We can learn from them. And so, and I think that says something about the experiences that they have, not only in school, but beyond as well. We have students that have sought out workshops and classes for themselves. Their families have sought them out. Williamsberry, the coding circuit. Our children are going there because they get really jazzed up in school about coding and then they can go and take courses or, you know, another thing.
One of the hottest Christmas gifts this year is Lego. Lego coding. And it's like, yeah, there's a Lego Boost and not only do you build the Legos, but then you can code it in five different ways. So yeah, that was a really hot item this year, if any of you have little boys at home.
Or girls.
Or girls. Excuse me, I can't believe I said that.
I can't believe you did either.
No, it's shocking.
This is Hour of Code week, so all of the STEM classes are coding all this week. So, and they're very excited about it.
I just wanted to add to what they were saying about the teacher proficiency level and how much higher it's gone up. We were going to host a Google certification program in Newburyport through EdTech teacher. And we anticipated, he said, you can have three seeds for free if you host in the district. And we figured we'd have some of our teachers that would be interested in becoming Google certified. The course, we ended up just holding it for our district because within four days, the class was filled with our teachers. So we didn't become a host site anymore. There was such high interest in districts, she said, it's going to be more cost-effective for you to just run the course for your district. And we have a waitlist of people who are saying, the next time, let us know. So I think that speaks volumes.
It's happening.
It's happening December 12th.
I'm also glad to hear, one of the things we were talking about curriculum last week was the move from consumption to creation. So a lot of times, kids in the classroom, they're consuming, like watching brain pop videos or taking quizzes online, that sort of thing, but getting the kids to actually make things, to produce, be it timelines or their own videos or their own projects using the computers is a, that's like the next-gen thing.
And I think we'll see more of that too through project-based learning.
Absolutely.
There are a number of teachers that participated in that PLC last year and have a lot of ideas to bring forward this year. And so that's, that's a nice connection as well as through our opportunities for NEBC partnership grants.
So a harder question. I know everyone's got the Surface Pros. The kids are on?
Chromebooks.
Chromebooks?
Or desktops.
And are there tablets?
iPads.
iPads. So like there's a, there's a world of apps that probably don't play well together. I guess is really my question. So like, because those use Microsoft apps, right?
Well, or Google.
Does use Android?
Yeah, particularly was a little bit of a concern our first year because everything was so new. And the technology integrators and the tech team had so much to do to get us up and running. And, you know, for us, the technology wasn't all ready to run on day one, just to function, right? And so there were a number of things that we needed to work out and I remember that was one of them. I think everything has really smoothed itself out with a lot of attention to detail and collaboration and coordination.
The other thing that I think happens now on a regular basis is that when teachers are finding an app that they think is a really good one to use, it's getting shared. So there's a, there's a lot more communication around technology now. And, you know, I mean, you can go into, and I'll just talk K-8 because obviously that's where the technology infusion was. But I have rarely been in a classroom where that whiteboard isn't being used on a regular basis, where students aren't in groups, you know, working, working with Chromebooks and, you know, kind of generating their own learning, working as a group, communicating with one another, with a teacher, you know, being facilitator. So in, you know, in a short three years, I think we've come leaps and bounds. We really have.
That's awesome.
And overall, you're pleased with the technology that was selected?
Yes, absolutely.
I think we did amazing.
And I think that one of the things that the tech committee has been talking about is that what we've learned is that as we move forward, we know that we're going to continue to offer options for people, that it can't be one-size-fits-all. And that that's, that's one of the big takeaways that we have. And the technology committee is meeting on Wednesday and, you know, we have a lot to talk about around the tech plan and where we're going and what our next steps are. So it's really, it's kind, it's pretty exciting where we are right now because we're at the point where we now need to solidify kind of the tech replacement plan. What's that going to look like? You know, are we going to be leasing? Are we going to purchase, you know, devices like this? Or are we going to say, you know, there's a lot of people who could use Chromebooks, so we're going to get a big bang for the buck if we're purchasing Chromebooks versus this, this device enabled us to set up the classroom so anyone could go in the classroom and use it. But moving forward, I think we're going to have some other options that are going to be very, in particular, pretty cost-saving, so.
Yeah, one of the things that I remember talking about a lot when we were building this school and on the building committee was, should we have a computer lab? Remember that? A lot of people were like, oh, it's outdated and we're not building a lot of schools with computer labs. And quite frankly, I was pretty skeptical about, like, why are we building a computer lab? The technology should come to the students. But I have to tell you, that computer lab is, is used quite a bit and it's nice, it's great to have that space, particularly when we're rolling out a new software to the children or a new program. I think it lends itself to nice collaboration to the library and media specialists, that the teacher can come down and that they can work together before then they go back to the classroom and try it. So I just, you know, as an aside, I've been personally pleased to see that we do have that space. And I'm kind of wondering, as new schools are accepted into MSBA, will they also choose the option of building a computer lab?
And it's interesting because at Noc Mullen, we took down a computer lab to open it up for a classroom for world language. So I, you know, I mean, I think at your level, I think it makes a lot of sense because kids are, you know, starting out there, but I think that as we go on, I think, I think labs are going to be, go by the wayside.
Has the technology held up in terms of, you know, durability?
Well, the Surface Pros break. They do crack, so that has been a concern. But the Chromebooks, the iPads, other than having to replace some of the batteries and the FM, the microphone systems in the classroom, I think that they, they really have held out. But the Surface Pros are a wonderful machine. I think it's like the best thing I've ever worked on, but they're fragile and the screens do break.
This version is newer. If, if we choose to continue to purchase some Surface Pros in the future, they, the next generation of Surface Pros, that's not an issue anymore because they've resolved that problem. So I think overall, from looking at it from a district perspective, pre-K to eight in terms of these devices, I think they, they were a really good choice in terms of learning, in terms of the versatility and, you know, yeah, we've had some cracks in the screen, but when you look at.
Where we were.
How many we were and the number overall that haven't had any damage to them, where the percentage is way higher. I mean, we're probably at 90-plus percent where we haven't had any issues.
Are people still using Office?
People are using Office in some cases. Some, they are. I mean, we're, we're encouraging Google. We're encouraging folks to, you know, to use Google. And I think that, I think that most are headed that way, Google classrooms.
I think we're all slowly transitioning to Google. I think it's used more often than not. I still find sometimes that there is, there are a few things that, that Office can do that.
Few features, yeah.
Yeah, a few features that.
I have a foot in both.
Maybe Google, yeah. I always have to know when I search. I say to Christine all the time, I don't know if I save that on my H drive because it was an old Word document or if that's in my Google Drive. So for me, it's like, where did I, where did I save something and what did I call it? But it really, I remember one year, like writing a personal goal that my goal was to do everything on Google. And I wouldn't even have to think of that as a goal now because it's just natural that that's, that's what we do.
And I think a lot, the majority of our teachers, I think, have transitioned K-8 to Google for sure. And just because of the ease of use and I think some of our teachers.
Even a lot of our high school.
Yeah, a lot of our high school as well. But I think some of our teachers who were really tech savvy kind of led the way and I think made, you know, their colleagues feel, begin to feel comfortable with it. And so it's really kind of taken on a, and it's, I would say it's more commonplace than not now.
And I would say too, that when we first moved to the new Brezner Hand, we all had technology. All the teachers had some level of technology and experience, but now, as soon as something goes down, people are like, now what, right? Because they have become so accustomed to having the technology at their fingertips. You know, when we go down as a system and we're struggling online and, you know, we might have to wait a few minutes to get back up and running, we all get anxious because we're just so accustomed to having it at our fingertips at all times.
But I have to say, we rarely go down now. I mean, when I was at the Brown.
Right. That's an important.
There were many days that we couldn't send an email or get online, like I'm, it's very rare. If, if we're down, it's, the city's down or Comcast is down or something's down, right? It's very rare. Sometimes it might be a little sluggish, but nothing like where we were four or five years ago. So it's been wonderful.
It's amazing what our tech team has done, really. They have accomplished so much in a short period of time. It's amazing. They are such a strong team and they are always readily available, no matter what they have going on any particular day.
That's great.
And after hours sometimes, too.
And after hours.
We do have one more category, but I think a lot of it.
We got lost.
We've talked about because everything is, you know, everything's integrated across to each of the program categories, but it's Safe and Supportive Schools. So what, we did have a grant when we started this, this plan that helped us bring in the Safe and Supportive School Grant. Kathy Riccio was instrumental in getting that to the district and it helped us bring in all the trauma courses and it helped us kind of kick that off with getting a lot of teachers inspired to now do the work for PBIS. And we've done so much. You know, if you go to the Brezner Hand, you'll see expected behavior posters with icons and not that that means that, you know, it's like this strict, no fun place, but just that children know, you know, what, what is the level of voice that I should use in the hallway versus in the classroom versus outside? You know, what do we expect when we're having a school assembly, eyes on the speaker, you know, paying attention? So that has helped a tremendous amount when you think of the number of little kids we have and are moving in and about that school every day, three to eight-year-olds, 650-plus children. You know, it's, it's a lot to, to have it running as smoothly as it does. And not to say that there aren't tweaks, you know, we're always looking to refine the cafeteria and the exit to and from and, but we've done a tremendous amount of work and, and really it's come from the teachers, which has been so nice. They were the ones like this, right after taking the first trauma-sensitive course offered through Leslie University, they're the ones that came to us with the posters and the ideas and how can we have school-wide language? And so that's been, it's just been wonderful because not only did we get this new school, but we had an opportunity to kind of lay the groundwork of how we wanted things to run. And we've done it through that lens of trauma-sensitive schools. So that's a big piece of what's in the Safe and Supportive Schools, as well as all the curricula that goes with it, the social thinking curriculum. We just had a number of teachers out again this fall at the conference. Preschool was recently trained. They were sort of the last to do the early childhood piece. We continue to offer responsive classroom training. We're having a group instructional assistants that will receive the training this Friday during the early release. And going forward, what we're really looking to do is, is building our PBIS matrix and implementing that too. So the group is already doing, has already done a lot of work in terms of developing the matrix. And the matrix is just sort of, you know, if this happens here, what's the response? What's the support? What does it look like? And it's just really all clearly laid out, but individualized for your school.
Can I just piggyback on responsive? I just want to piggyback on responsive classroom because last year, we also had some of our recess and lunch monitors, as well as some receptionists and others participate in responsive classroom. And it's been really great having the whole school engaged and involved. And it sends such a powerful message to the children when they. And it sends such a powerful message to the children when they know that their recess and lunch monitors have the same language that the rest of us are using. And, you know, last year was our first year that we started this effort. And we continue to include the staff in trainings and in staff meetings and so forth, at the beginning of the year especially. So that's working, too.
This has been a great presentation. And I realize it's, you know, early in your year, but one of the things we as a school committee understand is how important this school improvement plan is and the school council as a whole. So it may be too early, but do you have budgetary requirements that you feel you will need to fulfill this plan?
Yeah, of course.
Well, I know, but I want, I was trying to say it in a very nice way. Could you tell us what you need?
I think we anticipated, I think we anticipated that question. Susan had asked us to in preparation for her city council meeting. We would love to see a social worker at our school, which is a little bit different role and it goes hand-in-hand with the trauma-sensitive schoolwork and the Safe and Supportive schoolwork. And really, someone that can be a great liaison to the families. So we would see that person working hand-in-hand with the school adjustment counselors, but really being more in the outreach role as a social worker.
Are you looking for a school-specific position, full-time?
It would be wonderful.
That would be ideal.
I'm just pushing the envelope here to, you know.
And we would like to see the co-teaching model continue to expand within the Brezner Hand school. Those are two really big pushes that we're looking for.
They also would like to expand their library media service a little bit.
Yes.
What does that mean?
They'd like some additional staff.
I don't know if we should just push it all the way right now or not. We have Catherine Page, who fulfills the library media role as well as the technology integration role. And we did that in hopes that we would be able to merge the two, have a strong STEM program, and make it all happen with ease. Well, it happens, but it's not with ease. And so we're finding that although our students and our teachers are getting their needs met through a variety of channels and ways, it's not at the same level as if we had a tech integrator and a library media specialist.
It's a large library. It's a lot to, just to manage, you know, even if you just think the amount of books going in and out, as well as at the pre-KK level, we still have sort of the traditional library approach of, you know, kind of coming in, introducing them, tying it with a curriculum, doing a story or a craft, and sort of managing all of that. You know, Catherine sees about fifteen classes a week alone, just at the pre-KK level. And then on top of that is also working with a tech integration piece and the one-to-three. Still have library, it's just not come in and sit down and read a story. It's an integration piece, is the hub of learning. And so for one person to be doing all of those things has been a lot. And I'm not sure that any one person could do all of it to the highest level that we would like. And so that's something that we would, we would love to be able to provide some more support so that we can do it at the level that we would like to. And that doesn't mean that Catherine's not doing it. I want to clarify on that. But just, we combine the roles and we've made it work, but if there, if we could enhance it and continue to enhance it, it would be great.
We have some support in the library. We have an instructional assistant. And her position, or the position was increased from a .2, which was last year, to a .5 this year. But an instructional assistant is not the same as a media specialist in terms of being able to meet the needs of all the classes that go in for lessons and so forth. So it's a challenge. I mean, she's amazing. She's a media specialist herself, but that's not the role she's fulfilling right now at Brezner Hand School.
So those are three big ones.
All of you asked.
No, we want to know that. I just have one more. What about your class size or anticipating classroom teachers?
Our class sizes are awesome. They're amazing. We, our enrollment does not seem to be increasing. I think the largest class that we've had in a while is the group that just went to fourth grade. Our other classes are all pretty consistent between one hundred and thirty-two to one hundred and forty-two, one hundred and forty-four.
Except for kindergarten.
Right.
Kindergarten, our current kindergarten, I want to say it's at one eighteen or one nineteen.
And that's up from or down from?
It's down.
It's down.
From one thirty-two.
That's a trend. That's a trend, I think.
That is a trend, and I'm going to be coming in January to hopefully do the projections and everything. Not that I can really completely project ever, but we did see, I think I said, like, two or three years ago, we would see a drop-off in these years. And we have. And if you look at, you know, I have the data going back to like 2008, 2009. Back then, our class sizes, which we see now at the NOC, were about a hundred and eighty at kindergarten. So seven full-day classes, four half-day classes at the time. And then it dropped to about one sixty, one fifty. And then for the past three or four years, we held it about one forty, one thirty to one forty. And then this year, this incoming kindergarten class, we have a hundred and twenty, well, a hundred and nineteen, a hundred and eighteen right now. We didn't reduce, though. Our classrooms are still at between sixteen and eighteen. What we don't have is the separate half-day classes. So we've embedded everyone into the full-day classes. So we still have seven very full, full-day classes. So that's something to watch. You know, it'll be interesting to see what the trends are. And I'm working on that data right now and reaching out to some of the local Kentucky, Triton to see, you know, are they also seeing decreases? Which is what I'm hearing, I just want to verify.
I think it's a statewide trend for the most part. But what that will afford us is the opportunity in the future to perhaps open choice again, which is, which is something that we'd like to be able to do. So that's the other way to look at it, is that if we have numbers that are declining, then we can begin to open up choice, which we really have not been able to do.
For quite some time.
Right. And that's the advantage.
Or repurpose an FTE.
Two years.
Correct. That's the other thing, too. We certainly could do that.
Or both.
I didn't hear what you said.
Repurpose an FTE or both.
Amy, it might be too early for this question, too, but are you anticipating a change in the kindergarten tuition rate? No? Or, I'm sorry.
I think we're pretty high. You know, when I, when I look at what everyone is charging, we, there were more school districts since the last, if you recall, I gave you the map, right, of who has full day, who charges what. And there are more since the last time I presented that, that have offered free full-day kindergarten. I have been really thankful that we've been able to hold the sliding fee scale in place, even though we lost the grant. I know that you've supported that. I think that that makes kindergarten accessible, which is what we want. I have seen a little bit of a trend this year with a handful of students coming into kindergarten without any prior school experience, which I hadn't seen for a while, which I think is the signs of perhaps a sequestration when they had it and not as many children made it into Head Start. Our preschool program has absolutely no tuition assistance. That's a huge concern that I still have. I'm looking to apply for vouchers so that we would still have reimbursement, but families could use that. But I think that we are missing our neediest kids. They can't afford our preschool. They can't afford anyone's preschool. So that's a little bit of a concern. I am not going to recommend that we raise tuition just because I think it's high enough, but you could tell me otherwise, where enrollment is down. But we can look at all of that and working again on a much more thorough report for you for January.
Thank you.
Before you go, could you just briefly, and I'm putting you on the spot here, update us on the breakfast program?
Sure.
Oh, yes. From our perspective, it's been a huge success. It requires a lot of attention, but we've had approximately twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-one students. That's not enough, though, to run the program all year long.
Do you know what the, what the magic number is?
Forty to fifty. Pam just said today. She stopped by. And this is our fourth week. We said we would run it for four weeks. This is our fourth week. We talked about drafting a communication to the families. I real, at the very beginning, it started, we had very low numbers, eight or ten. And then all of a sudden, it spiked quickly, but it's been stable right there. We can't seem to get beyond the thirty, thirty-one.
Is transportation an issue for those? Do they come early or do you?
No. We start serving.
So they're on the regular buses?
They're on the buses. We've asked the parents if they provide the transportation to be at school by eight oh five, so that they can get into the cafeteria immediately. So we run it, we begin serving at eight oh five. And most of the children are often running by eight twenty, which is our start of the day. And then we'll have a few stragglers that will be there until eight twenty-five, eight twenty-six. And we have cafeteria passes for them now so that when they get to the classroom, their teacher knows they've been at school, on time, having breakfast.
I'd say that's probably the only feedback that we could work on is that, you know, the amount of time it takes to just to travel from the cafeteria to all the way down the hall if you're in this is well, that's class. It takes some time, right? And so that has, for some children, you know, delayed their start, you know, whereas the teacher would like to start right at eight twenty. If we have children in the breakfast program, we're really trying to work on that.
What is a typical breakfast?
Well, they're nice. So Janey DiRico is our head cook. She's amazing. She's made like homemade muffin tops some days.
Oh, we
You know, there's also cereal. There's some hot items that have been available, yogurt cups.
Cheese sticks, juice, milk is always a choice. Just like the lunch, there's always a choice. And the children eat the breakfast.
And what is the charge for that?
One seventy-five.
Is it the same?
I'm sorry?
One seventy-five?
I believe it's one seventy-five. I might have to look it up, but I think that is resonating with me. And obviously, free or reduced is, you know, reduced or free.
It's just been great to see a small number of children in the cafeteria. They love coming in. They get a little time to socialize. It's almost like a warm-up for their day.
Like a coffee club.
It really is. And the social interactions among the children is amazing. Karina, Amy and I are in there most mornings and really, it's been such a nice way for even us as the adults to start our day. We sit down with them, we engage in conversation. There aren't a hundred children in there at that time of day.
Well, what's been nice for me, I'm totally, I'm sorry, I'm totally interrupting you, is that sometimes in the morning, I'm out directing traffic quite a bit. And Karina and Christina have really come to know some of the kindergarten children really well, too. And so it's been a nice connection as we try to branch out and broaden ourselves, too.
Yes, we have some new friends.
Yes.
It's been great.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thanks for having us. All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda, which we promised would be on every agenda, is later start times. And I know we formed a subcommittee of Mr. Hochheiser, Mr. Reardon, and Mr. Mannan. And they did meet last Saturday morning. Do you want to give us a short update? We're a little timely here.
There isn't much of an update. We talked about some things, kind of just reiterated a bit of a list of things that we might need moving forward. We drafted a letter of summary. It says, you know, this is where we are, because there are a lot of people who expect us to vote. So we wanted to let them know that we're not voting and why.
And what was the stated reason for not voting?
Schools weren't ready. That the plan we had in place and the place where the schools were, wasn't going to be a good thing for kids or schools.
Because we had a joint ed meeting before this meeting, and I think the city council was told that it was because we were searching for a new superintendent and a new principal. So it's a factor, but it's not the only fact. So I just wanted to, you know, when joint ed met, we wanted to make that clear.
So I mean, I can list, like, we said, without the Cape Ann League fully on board, it's tough to do without minimizing impact on class time and competitiveness. The high school's not ready to implement the schedule that would accommodate the impacts they've named. The Brezner Hand Mullen expressed a lot of concerns to families and to kids' learning time. There was, there's still a question from the school committee concerning the strength of research around the impact on academic performance. And in general, we just don't feel that there's enough, strong enough community or professional support to override the hurdles as they were presented to us last month. So, you know, we just have some, some work to do, including some logistic things, including some hearts-and-minds things, and some pieces like, you know, the bus contract and teacher contract and scheduling and
Negotiations.
Negotiations. And this is just a host of reasons that, based on the school presentations, we just don't feel we're ready.
Is this what you're referring to?
Yes. Choosing not to vote, yes, that's it.
And you and Mr. Mannan drafted this on that Saturday, or?
I drafted it. I shared it with Sean and Bruce, who read through it.
Can you send it to the rest of us?
I thought I did. Did I not? Sorry.
You did.
I did.
It was posted on Facebook, too.
Yeah, I think, I think, I'll double-check, but I think I shared it with, I'll share it right now.
Yeah, I think you did already, but.
Yeah.
David?
Yep.
Did you discuss, perhaps didn't have the time in the meeting to start discussing that, but how we should approach educating or evangelizing the concept to teachers, which don't seem to be reacting to practical things, not necessarily looking at the scientific evidence of the long-term benefits? Was that discussed at all, how to sell it?
We didn't really get that specific. I mean, definitely, it's a need. We talked about, we're going to have to get with the teachers, with the administration, with the PTO, with the athletic directors, with the Cape Ann League in general. You know, we named a bunch of groups of people we were going to have to contact and try to evangelize towards. We didn't, you know, strategy did not, we didn't have that much time. But definitely, I mean, I would see, personally see teachers as probably one of the toughest groups to get to, just because it's tough to get in front of the teachers, because we're not at staff meetings. So they're a tough group.
That's an indication of the fact that we need to come up with a plan to
Yeah, we need to come up with a plan.
Reach out to them and work with them.
So if you haven't had an opportunity to look at this or read it, and you would like to give feedback to that subcommittee, please do so, I guess, through either this document, because it's a Google doc for you.
Yep.
And then it will become kind of our white paper as to where we are and where we're trying to go. So we want to make sure it's accurate. So if you would all take the time, to all of us, take a look at that and make sure it indeed reflects where we are in our thinking.
I did also, I put out a chart with some of these tasks, because I know some of the people in the audience last week said, you know, I've already done this, I have this information, I know this person. So just let people signing up, you know, nobody has yet, but it's the holiday season. I think people are going to take a couple of weeks off at least. But I know within the people who have been working on this for a while, the idea of seeing how many, if we can get some more new people involved is also of interest.
Doesn't this document have a link also to all the resources that you've cited before? So they're all in one place?
It does. It does, yep.
So that's why it needs to be
So the.
So that's why it needs to be kind of pristine and a statement from the committee, I believe.
So, I mean, some of the things I, I linked here were like the Bresnahan presentation that you guys put together last week. I scanned in the, the high school presentation, and I linked it here. The letter from the Middle Sex League that they've put together as a mission statement. The page of resources, like just the research that we've been looking at.
This is the document we looked at.
The document we looked at, that Alex shared from, from Hagens.
It's all there.
Is linked here. The Dr. Owen's presentation from when she came here is linked here. So, yeah, I tried to link all the, the, the big picture documents there.
And I think you did a very thorough job in that as well, so. That's why I'd like everybody to give Dave feedback, if you could, just, yes, it's okay. No, I'd like to see this change or whatever. And then we can kind of post it again, or whatever. Maybe put it up on our school committee Facebook page again, if there are changes.
Okay. Actually, did I put it on the school? Yeah, I think I did put it on the school committee. But I, well, yeah, I reposted it, yeah, there, yeah. Nobody, at least that I know, was angry at us for not voting.
Well, I think this, I think, you know, the reasons we stated here in public were compelling. And we don't want to make a mistake at this point, so. But the more information we can get out and, you know, even to keep the committee abreast of what, what you're doing in your subcommittee, so.
Okay.
I would, I would suggest that that later start time stays on your agenda come the new year.
Okay.
Any questions about that subcommittee meeting? Thank you for doing that. Mr. Decanter.
Yes.
Policies.
Lovely policies.
Your favorite thing.
Oh, we're, we're getting close now. We're getting close.
G.
We're doing section G, which is what I sent out to you. Section E is just about ready, but I couldn't get it completed in time to send out to you, so that you'd have a chance to, to lose it and look at it. And then we only have section I left after that, which is curriculum and instruction. So that's gonna be a big, a big package that we're taking care of this coming Saturday.
So is this?
Just a little guy. Only thirty-six pages. The last, last, at our last meeting, we went through close to ninety, a little, a little over ninety pages of policy. Some people have all the book.
It's just gonna be this page?
That's it.
But you can have one document.
No, that. It's like, it's, it's.
Yep. So I sent out section G to everybody. I have received comments back from Mr. Hochheiser. Thank you, David. Most of David's comments were things that just require some minor editing. He had a couple of questions in there, which, one of them I'm happy to take online. I didn't see anything that really needed to be discussed as a group.
No.
But I'll be happy to clarify the, the issues. And I think more, more to the fact, your questions raised the need for clearer wording on that particular item, so we will, we will take a look at that. If anybody else has any comments to add to this, I would like to take it to our second reading at our next meeting.
Will you be making some changes?
I will make changes between now and then, and I will submit them to you the way I was doing, in the finished form and the red line version, so that you know what changes I made from the first version I sent out.
Right, I saw Mr. Hochheiser's changes. Any questions? Any, so, mayor?
Well, first of all, I just, Nick and committee, thank you. I am amazed at the level of work that you are putting out in terms of updating these policies that we talked about for years of updating. And I just, I'm so grateful for all the work that your committee is doing. It's, it's really remarkable. I have a question about GBK, Staff Complaints and Grievances, just quickly, because is there ever a situation where?
Could you give us a page?
It is page.
Fifteen?
Sixteen. Are there abouts, depending on how your pages are numbered?
Sixteen.
Is there ever a situation where a grievance comes to the level of the school committee?
Correctly, no.
But that's kind of what that says, doesn't it?
No, I don't believe it does. I'd say that if a, the way I understand it, they're talking about the appellate process in points one and two. They can appeal first to their principal, and if it's an administrator, they can appeal to the superintendent. If they don't have satisfaction at that level, then the next level of escalation would be the school committee. But it's not, it's not a direct.
However, I, I do recall several contract negotiations ago, without language was totally eliminated, that the school committee no longer, we used to be able to hear grievances, but we can no longer hear.
Okay. Just, would you go back and look at that again, just make sure that that's clear? And I would just be sure that wherever you identify, for example, number two there, you mentioned appeal ruling to the superintendent to the committee, put school. There's so many committees.
Now, the other thing that could change this at any given time is when you're negotiating another contract.
Of course.
And if the grievance procedure changes, you could find that we would then have to update this, this policy. This is, this is meant to be a broad-based policy, but your contract, your individual bargaining unit level, you're gonna start there.
Yep.
So it's going to be rare that, that an issue would come before the school committee, because it's usually resolved at either the building or the central office level. But, I mean, it certainly could happen. I've had experiences where grievances have come before the school committee. But that's, that's gonna be the exception to the rule.
Yeah, the part, the paragraph just before paragraph one says, "In accordance with parameters established through negotiated agreements, the channels will be followed." So that is always the first level of. It may need to be clearer, but that's our attempt.
Okay. Great work. Thank you. Any other thoughts?
Okay.
Again, if you have further feedback, would you give that to Mr. Decanter before your next meeting?
And we will have section H. Is that one that's in? Yeah.
E.
E. E and I at the next meeting.
E, I. What about O?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
I want to talk with you about the principal search committee, and I'm passing out to you the who is on the committee. And I have three teachers who are on the committee. I had nine teachers apply. I had five administrators apply to be on the committee. There are three administrators, there are three parents, and there are two students along with myself on the committee. We are meeting for the first time tomorrow. The application process closed on Friday. We have thirty-three applicants. Of the thirty-three, we have two from foreign countries. The, the rest, I have not vetted all of them yet, but I would say that we have a very healthy twenty-five to thirty strong candidates. So I think we are in great shape. I had predicted that we would have some really strong candidates, and we do. So the committee will meet tomorrow for the first time. I will be walking them through how to access the applications. They have a couple of weeks to go through the applications, to, to develop some questions. And when we meet for the first time, we will determine the candidates that we want to interview in round one, along with the questions that we want to ask them. I will, I am participating by listening only. I'm not asking any questions of candidates. I am looking to the committee to make recommendations to me for the two, two to three finalists. And then I will have a, a small, a much smaller committee who will kind of vet the finalists and hope to be making a recommendation to, my recommendations to the school committee at the end of January, beginning of February. We will, we have a tight process, and part of that was due to the fact that I know that the superintendent's search is going on simultaneously, and I wanted to be able to take that piece off the plate, so to speak. I also want there to be, as, as I know you do for the superintendent transition, I want there to be a reasonable amount of time for transition for the new person to be able to meet with staff at the high school and to meet with my parent as well. So I think we have a, a strong committee. I'm excited about having two students on there as well. And we had nine parents that applied to be on it. So we had, we had very good, very good turnout. So I'm, I was pleased with that. But I think that we have a good plan in place, and we'll keep you posted as we move along. And I would be happy to take any questions. All right.
When is your first meeting? I'm sorry. Any questions? Sorry, I had my head down. Assistant Superintendent's report. Now, there's nothing on here, so.
I wanted to surprise you. Now, I, I wanted to talk a little bit about our ELL education, our English Language Learner education in the district, because it may have some budget impacts moving forward, perhaps even
This year.
Before we get to the end of this year. Perhaps not, but I just wanted to.
Just one of these unfunded mandates?
No, it's really not an unfunded mandate. It's just a change in our district, and it's a, it's a, it's a change that has been remarkable for us. Very positive in many ways, but it's forced us to think a little differently about how we're educating our students. And, and I don't think that that's a bad thing. It's just different for us. So today, we registered three new ELL students in the district. And, and our population is growing all the time. So we're at just about thirty students now, just under thirty. But the, the impact is that the majority of those students are newcomers that are coming into the district, which means they speak no English or very little English. And so when we're servicing a newcomer and trying to provide service that would allow them enough English acquisition that they can access curriculum in some ways, it requires a couple hours of one-on-one instruction per day to, to do that. And we have three ESL teachers in the district that are working very hard and are doing a great job with our students. But it's becoming evident that, you know, we need to boost our core more than we have. And when I say that, all of our classroom teachers who have English learners in their classrooms have taken the SEI cores, that's one class. It's very foundational. And when you have a child that doesn't speak any English, that's not enough to give you a repertoire of strategies that will allow you to reach that, reach that child's needs. So we were identifying, you know, the need for more professional development so that we can really boost our core strategies in the classroom. We are, we are finding ourselves in a position where we're having to recreate schedules of our ESL teachers on a regular basis, because you get a new student, and that changes the dynamic, and it changes the groups, and you have to rethink and re-coordinate with classroom teachers and try to figure out a way to make that all work. So we're just looking at a lot of dynamics around it to support it. We have, we're very lucky that, you know, we have someone in the position. Karina is in a position of providing us with some parent support and helping us make community connections around that, and there's more and more need for that all of the time. We have another fifteen parents this session of ELL instruction for our parents through Adult Ed. Last year, we had twenty-five parents participate. This year, we have another fifteen, which is great, that our parents are getting involved. And, but there's just, there's a lot going on, and we're going through some growth pains as we build this program and try to get good at it. So we're also kind of refining how we look at all of our students' needs. We're, we're realizing that we have, we have to build a deeper understanding of the continuum of needs that we have in, in our students. We're really trying to break down silos, I was saying. You know, these are interventions that we offer to our English learners. These are interventions that we offer to our special education students. These are interventions that we offer to struggling learners. We're really trying to look at, we have a continuum of learners, and there are many needs in that continuum. And how are we best going to be able to meet the needs of all of our learners? So we're doing a lot of work, and it's good work, and I think everybody's working very hard. But we're not there yet. And, and, and the population is, seems, and the need is growing faster than we're able to get there right now. So with the resources we have, our resources are tight. And we're doing the best we can, but it's, we're, it's a stretch.
Challenging.
It's challenging. And I, I wanted Angela to just to update you on this tonight, because if this continues, we will be in a position where I, I will, will be, will have to hire additional staffing in order to meet the needs of students. So I just want you to be aware of that. I want you to be aware that we are growing. And, you know, another three students could put us right over the edge. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Can you give us a breakdown as to how the population breaks down? School-wise, I'm not asking for grade-wise, but how many do we have at the Braz? How many do we have at the Mullen, at the Locke, and at the high school? Just to see where there's a concentration. Secondly, I guess I would ask is, how is this different? I mean, obviously, it's greater, greater need. How does this differ from what we put into the budget? How many students did we budget for? And what has changed? That more people are coming? Yes, I know, but where are they coming from? Is this a trend that is going to be increased? You know, are these kids that are coming? We've mentioned Brazil a couple of times, seems to be a core. Or is it now going to change? And are we gonna be bringing people in from Puerto Rico because the situation there is so dire? These are the things that we need to be able to identify and to be able to use to, to prepare our strategies. And I know everybody's working hard.
Yeah.
And that, that I don't need to hear from you. I need to hear from you, hey, these are our recommendations, because, 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 because this is the trend that we see happening because this, and this, and this. And that's, that's the kind of report that I would be looking for to, to, to complete this package. I think it's a tremendous challenge and a tremendous opportunity. It's not a new one. Way back when, before I was gray-haired, I was a bilingual teacher, so that's way, way back. So it is, it's an exciting challenge.
I agree.
And I think what's most exciting to me is that, over the years, I think we have been criticized being a community that's a little on the vanilla side. And this is beginning to bring some of the diversity that we want our students to grow up with, to learn about, and I think that's, that's very exciting. So I'm encouraged by this. But we do need to, to understand the.
And I can, I can speak to you about some of that. We have a high concentration of our student population at the elementary level. Right now, we have about sixteen, I think seventeen arrived. I think our seventeen student at the elementary level arrived today. We have. We have, we have probably eight students, Mullen and middle, upper elementary and middle school, and we have about seven at the high schools. Now, I might not have all those numbers exactly right, but then we're in that, we're about in that range. And I think the thing that has changed is the need, the profile of the student that's coming in. So, you know, many of our students that used to come to Newburyport, our English learners that used to be kind of our standard profile, where our students were coming in with a solid education in their native country or in their native language and then entering the Newburyport Public School and then it was really about English acquisition at that point. And that's not necessarily the profile of the student that's coming. Now, particularly in our early elementary years, you know, they, they don't have proficiency in their native language before they enter, so that makes a big difference.
But that's also a wonderful opportunity because that's the age where they learn quickest and-
That's right.
And are least shy about their learning skills.
Yeah, that's true. That is true. And I think there's some other dynamics that we're seeing too that are coming. You know, we know that there are challenges that accompany students that may come from a lower socioeconomic background and some of our families are faced with those challenges as well in our English learner population. So, I, I just want to say that the needs of the students are more complex and so that is what we didn't anticipate. I think we anticipated about twenty-five students for this year. We've been running between, at about twenty, we knew we'd probably have a little bit of an increase, but the complexity of the student is, is greater.
I think you've just been very eloquent to support Christina Davis's request for the social work.
Yeah. Yes. So, yeah, it's, the, our students are wonderful and you're absolutely correct. They are adding a very welcome diversity to our student population and they're being embraced by the other students and by our teachers and, and their families are to the community are very welcoming and we love having them. It's just, it's a new twelfth, you know, it's a, it's a new dynamic to the, to the system. So, I work, you know, very closely with the English language learning team and, and we've got our heads together all the time and we're putting ideas together, we're working collaboratively with other districts and, but we've, we've got some building to do.
What languages?
Um, I think we have-
Is it mostly Portuguese now?
No, mostly Portuguese because many of our students are coming from Brazil, but we have, I think, three or four other languages as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Subcommittee reports. Mr. Hawke, does he want to report out on joint ed this evening?
We went through, kind of rehashed and maybe took a deeper dive into the presentation from last week, Susan's priorities, the strategic planning and what some-
The joint meeting.
Right. We talked about the budget increase, the 3.1. I think you had a question about, I don't know if you got that worked out, but it was-
Yes, I did. It was a typo.
Okay. So, there was just one typo that Cheryl pointed out.
I'm sorry. Right, I was looking at, it's not a typo, I'm sorry. The 3.1 plus 100,000 was for this year.
Revised this year, yeah.
Right.
And it was the 3.1.
Two hundred thousand for next year.
Yes.
Was that finance? What committee was that?
It was the joint ed.
Joint ed.
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear.
We talked a bit about vocational school. I don't really remember what we got. So, there was a pledge line about sending even vocational school. So, we talked about, you know, the role it plays and the statistics and how we're sending more kids than we used to.
I updated a little bit about the superintendent's search as well.
Right.
Finance?
Yeah, we've already, haven't met since last reported.
Policy?
We-
We already know.
We already know. Curriculum instruction and expectations. Sean, do you want to?
Sure. Yeah, we met on the 27th and we talked a lot a bit about the data and the MCAS and how that's going to be presented. We talked a lot about the technology and they spoke about the one-to-one initiative in sixth grade and how we're going to expand to the seventh grade. And again, I think we talked a little bit about that, just the replacement program and technology plan, the things the technology committee's working on. And I think that was pretty much it for what we talked about.
We talked briefly about PD-
Oh, PD.
-and front-loading that or not across the year.
Oh, just in the kind of data that's being collected about the Friday PD days.
Oh, that's right. So, they talked about Friday half-days. Susan was saying that they saw an uptick in absenteeism.
Student absenteeism. Not in staff, but in student. We'll be reporting on that.
And then Angela, I mean, the case again, to keep the days as they were, not to front-load them. We were talking about whether or not we would be able to front-load some of the PD days and have schools start after Labor Day. It seems to be a lot of feedback we're getting from parents on a pretty regular basis. So, we talked about that for a while. I think most of the time that we stood, talking about technology and the one-to-one initiative.
Thank you.
The presentation of the year.
Later school start times, we, we heard about superintendent's search committee. A lot of information went out today. The one thing that I would like to ask the school committee to put on their calendar is a focus group on December 13th at the NOC-Mullen Library from six to eight. We will be holding focus groups throughout the course of the day, that day, from 8:30 to 9:30. We're looking to run a group for parents, some with, children with special education or support needs. From 8:30, from 9:30 to 11:00, we will have a focus group of all the school administrators, which is twenty-something-plus people.
Not everyone will be available, just due to some scheduling issues for people.
And then from 2:30 to 4:30, we have also procured the NOC-Mullen Library for any staff feedback, which includes secretarial, custodians, lunch, and that'll be kind of a flowing in, flowing out because the schools get out at different times. So, we thought we'd put everything at the NOC-Mullen to make it easier for people so that they could filter in. The message I sent to staff today said that they didn't have to stay for the whole meeting. It's not like that. It's, you know, give you input. And then that's from 2:30 to 4:30, as I said, and then the community, school councils, PTO, Rotary, everybody that wants to would come to a focus group from six to eight the evening of the 13th, which is when I'm inviting all of you to go to. The purpose of the focus group is to identify characteristics that we want to see in a new candidate. So, we'll be building a candidate profile. All those focus groups will take place on the same day and then Nezdeck takes all of that information and breaks it down into, number one, obviously, what the assets are, but also they will break it down into the groups of people who responded. In other words, we'll know what the community feels are the most particular assets, the staff, and they'll break those down for us. Now, the reason I'm going through all of this, we've talked about not having a school committee meeting on December 18th. And so, the, it would be the response, it would be my responsibility to get out to you the superintendent's profile as soon as it's given to me. That would be the only consideration for a meeting on the 18th and I feel that we could do that, perhaps through email correspondences. It's just to give you information about what people are thinking we need in our new superintendent. Does anybody have a question? And then the, the search committee will have their first meeting on January 11th, which will be a training session, which will run for almost three hours. Mr. DeCantor?
I'm a little concerned about the evening session because we have such a huge population we're trying to reach out to and such a variety of interests that might be represented there. And I guess my concern is that people will be participants or will be present, but because of the size of the group, might not be able to participate, might feel frustrated that their input is not being considered and valued. It just seems to me that there might be a need to perhaps, rather than trying to bulk them into this large group, certain key stakeholders that we might want to focus a one-on-one telephone interview with, the president of the NEF, for example.
Let me stop you there. That is part of our protocol. We have a list of people that we will conduct phone interviews with.
So, that wasn't clear.
I'm sorry, I didn't mention it. I'm sorry. And also, what we're going to do is set up a, a website for that week of focus groups. And anybody who can't attend a focus group will be able to give comments back to Nezdeck through an open communication line that they're going to put up for us. Also-
Service.
I'm sorry?
Service.
Yes. And also, on the, the notice I sent out today, there is Dr. Carolyn Burke, who is our facilitator, her address, so people could write to her if they wanted, if they missed the meeting. But we've already identified key stakeholders, you know, like the fire marshal, the president of Rotary, NEF, and the other thought we had was to send kind of handwritten invitations to those people or to get in touch with them via the email line.
The other thing you might consider, Cheryl, is that to have a second section of the library or another room available just by chance, you end up with a very large group that you, having sat through the focus groups all day, then you move a group somewhere else to.
We can arrange that.
You know, I just, you have to be prepared to do that.
Yes, we can open a classroom up.
Yeah.
I mean, it might be, it might be the, you never know.
You could be six people.
We might get 12 people.
You know, I remember going to one of these, I think there were five of us there and it was the community one. That went.
But the one we-
You just don't know.
Right. But the one we ran for Susan, we used the, and we could move the, the other pieces. I had set aside space here for that meeting in case there were a lot of people, but we decided to have everything at the NOC Library. The other point of what you were saying, Nick, is Dr. Burke is a very good facilitator in these kinds of meetings. And I remember the one we had for this superintendent, we had it in the city hall auditorium upstairs and we had posters everywhere. I still have pictures of it, so.
I, I just wanted to make sure that we address that, that need and not-
I love that you think millions are coming.
You know, if we're not prepared for them, they'll absolutely show up.
And, and, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, how are, like, these groups getting notified that this is happening this day? Is it just like?
Well, one went out on Blackboard Connect today. I don't know, you must not have seen it yet, but you have it as a parent. There's also a press release going into the paper. I sent a specific message today that's through Blackboard Connect.
It went out to parents and it went out to, it went out to two groups, to staff today as well.
All staff and all parents, so we're, we're trying and, you know, please, when you're out and about, I, I also, I think what I'll do is, Dave, maybe I'll ask you to put it on the school committee webpage. So, we're trying to use, you know, social media, we're trying to use the newspaper, sort of individual reach-outs and then if at any point after a focus group, if any of you think that there are other people we should contact, that's where the phone interviews and the feedback mechanism would come into play.
Will you be sharing us, with us, the list that you have developed so far for who's going to be getting the one-on-one treatment?
Sure.
And it doesn't have to happen now if he just-
Oh. Well, we were thinking about, you know, the fire marshal because of safe and supportive schools might want to be involved, the police chief may want to be involved. We talked about reaching out to some of the churches in, in town for, you know, input that way. We have some members on our search committee who are community members, particularly with the backgrounds in diversity and, and, you know, those kinds of things. So, I think we wind up with a committee of eighteen people.
No, I, this committee, it's a challenge to keep these committees small and to keep them working and I understand that.
Well, I think we've reached out to so many different types of people based on what they presented to us in their letter. You know, some are parents and business people and-
It was a difficult choice.
It was.
Yeah.
We had a good pool of people, which was a good problem to have.
I just think there's several, some people that, you know, absolutely, we need to reach out individually too. And I'm, I'm sure I have some of the same names on my list that you would have on yours.
Absolutely. And please forward those to me if you want and I will share the list of potential phone interviews with you as well. So, we're trying to reach everybody and do everything and, you know, the, the posting has been put up. As a matter of fact, I found that out from Susan, who received the posting. So, that's already out there. The advertising we're doing is through our regular contract. There'll be no additional costs for advertising and I sent the contract to Kathy today. She was looking for it. So, we should be well within-
We, we didn't receive the contract. We received the proposal.
Well, that's all I have, the cost proposal.
We need an actual copy of the contract.
All right. I don't have that, you do, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Anything further on that? The only thing left is to decide whether we want to have a meeting on December 18th or not. We talked a lot about it the last time. I don't know if we reached a conclusion. Could I hear comments or thoughts?
I had thought we decided against unless you were to come up other valid reasons.
And the reason I was going to bring us together was to go over the candidate profile, but I think I can send it to you as opposed to sitting in a meeting.
We do have two more sections of policy that we're, I was hoping to present that day, at that meeting.
The next meeting is just January 4th.
Which would be with an entirely new school committee. I mean, I can do that, but they'll be hit with curriculum and instruction and student services at the same time as an initiation.
It's only one person.
True.
One new person. Mr. Cole, do you have thoughts?
Whatever the committee chooses to do.
Well, you are part of the committee and so I'm asking what you choose.
It's a, it's a, I mean, maybe we should vote on it.
I think Mr. Mullen was also talking about, he thought there were things that needed, still needed to be talked about and I don't know what he was saying at that, at that point.
What he, what he said was he always likes to talk. That's what he said. I'm always one to sit and talk.
Is it Wednesday, first meeting in January?
January 4th.
Oh, it's a Thursday?
January 4th is just an organization, is just the organization meeting?
No, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
Did I get the wrong date?
Second is Tuesday.
Second's a Tuesday. Isn't that inauguration day?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Because that's what I thought. I thought it was later in the month, right?
Yeah.
But we also have a retreat that week.
The 4th.
That's where, that's, that's where-
That's what you're thinking.
Yeah.
Because typically, we hadn't been meeting on inauguration night.
Right.
We haven't been.
No.
Then we just have the organizational meeting.
That's the organizational meeting in the morning, right.
Which, well, it's not really a formal meeting. Which, well, it's not really a formal meeting. You, you know, make decisions about the vice chair, and a vice chair is elected on the stage at the inauguration, which starts at 10:00 on the second. They'll all get invitations.
Okay.
In the morning?
Yeah. It always is.
That's not true.
Yes, it is. The inauguration has never been at night.
It has to, but I didn't take the day off last year.
Well, you didn't have to last year.
We didn't have a
Two years ago, I mean.
We didn't have a mayoral. It was four years ago.
There wasn't a mayoral election last year.
Oh, because it's for you.
Right.
So
It's by charter. It's, it's actually, by charter says the inauguration will occur the first Monday in January unless it's a holiday.
I'm gonna have a problem
Getting that day off?
By contract, I can't take that day off.
Because it's the day after the vacation, you can't.
Well, if you speak to the principal and say you're being elected, you know, it's your inauguration as a school committee member?
I will ask.
Okay.
Do you want us to send you a note?
Thanks.
Like the doctor notes from the superintendent.
David, if it would help if I reached out to you, superintendent, I would be willing to do that for sure. You know, I mean, I'm
I mean, because there's inaugurations happening all over the state that day.
I, I understand that. Okay.
It would be terrible if you weren't there.
I understand that. I'm just telling you, it's
It'll be a half-day.
It's gonna be a, okay. I will ask. I will present my case.
There are a lot of people behind you that'll ask for you, too.
I, I know that. It's just
So by charter, it's the first Monday of January unless, it happens to be a holiday, which this Monday does. So then that's why it's kicked over to Tuesday at 10:00. Meet in City Council Chamber at 9:30. Get your boutique, your boutonnieres, and then everyone will process upstairs to the auditorium. It will be probably hour, hour and 15 minutes or so. And then lunch will be served at Mission Oak. No, I'm sorry, at Nicholson.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, at the Greek church, catered by Loretta. So just so that you all know, and we'd like you all to be there.
Sean?
I personally think we should meet on the 18th, only because, I didn't think so at first, but because it's Cheryl's last meeting, and Bruce isn't here, and I think that we should all be together to
Send me on my way to Oz.
Send you off to run the search committee.
I was hoping you were gonna forget that.
No.
Why would I forget that? Trust.
So I think it'd be a short meeting.
Yeah. I had comments already, in case.
Okay, so we'll stay at those for the 18th.
Sure.
Oh, yourself, sweet. Wait.
Well, you've done a really amazing job.
That's not any short meeting. That's, that sounds great.
Short meeting.
Short meeting on the 18th. Okay, we're good?
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Can I just, so just, so when is our first meeting in January?
The retreat is the 4th, and then the first real meeting is the 16th. It's a Tuesday because Monday is Martin Luther.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
After that, I'm not responsible for anything, meeting-wise.
So we'll grind out some policy, too, right?
Yeah.
Gotta get it past me.
All right.
We're gonna get it done.
That's it. That's all.
Gotta get it done by the end of the year.
No reports, no nothing.
We're gonna get it done.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? No, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.